Let me call the roll.
Yes, dear.
Board member Angela Berry.
Here.
Board member Kim Shaw Elliott.
Here.
Vice Chair Hart McIntyre.
Here.
Chair J.C. Infel.
Present.
City Manager Kyle Weepler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Board Member Brynne Bozera was unable to attend.
Item one. Did everybody approve the agenda? I looked through the agenda.
Good. We'll do it again.
Second.
Are you in motion to approve the agenda? Or are there questions?
We've got a motion, we've got a second, no questions. We're all good.
Yeah. Go ahead. Who's motion?
I did a motion to.
I second it.
In second. So now we've got to vote, I guess.
All those in favor?
Aha.
Unanimous. Approval of the May 9th Planning and Zoning Board Minutes. Do anybody see any problem with the minutes? I didn't see any problem with minutes. Does anybody else see any problem with the minutes that were here?
Straightforward.
Well, then you and I, you.
Shall move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kim, you get to do the next one.
For things I have in president. Oh, yeah, that one.
You can do the next one. Review of the draft of the ordinance for the city code, Chapter 86 regarding suit sign regulations. That's the purpose of this meeting. I read this and kept going back and forth. I am open for discussion right now if there's any objections as we continue with the situation.
I was gonna ask if we could get a little background on it. Why, you know, what's driving the changes? Who made the changes? And just for clarification specifically, as we get back in the back, what are districts, RL and RM, what's the difference between the two?
Lots of bite off there, so I'm gonna take your questions in succession. Thank you, Member Hart. Randy Mora, City Attorney. I think it's important to have a little bit of a chronology of events here, and then we can talk about the case law and the product before you. I've been your city attorney almost exactly a year now. I was retained around late May, early June of last year. When I interviewed for this position, one of the principal inquiries that I received from all of the council members, or many of the council members, was about the city sign code, and if I could help change, adopt, modernize the sign code. After we worked through the transition of the city manager position and other shorter-term priorities last summer and the fall, the question came, where are we on the sign code? So my office prepared an ordinance, a version of the ordinance you have before you. The commission has seen this previously and asked that you folks weigh in on it and sort of serve as another set of eyes. My office prepared this ordinance because, back in 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States issued an opinion in a case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. The summary, and the quickest way possible to say it, is what was going on in that case was there was a church and pastor seeking to place temporary signs announcing services in their community. And they filed suit claiming that the town's sign ordinance restricting the size, duration, and location of these temporary directional signs violated their right of free speech. And the district court, that's the trial court that they were in, denied the church's motion. Their court of appeals, that was in the Ninth Circuit, so out towards California way, affirmed in part and remanded in part, and on remand, the town won again. And the church and pastor appealed, and it got to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court felt that the sign code was subject to strict scrutiny, which is the highest level of analysis when you give First Amendment free speech regulation, and they found that the sign code violated free speech guarantees. And that was because the sign code had different restrictions for, if it's a religious organization doing this, political signs were regulated a certain way, which most communities had their sign codes that way. That was the generally agreed upon and understood norm. If we were gonna regulate political signs different than the Bella Beach 5K signs and whatever else. And the court said, no, 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 because what you're doing is you're making content-based regulations, and you can't do that for non-commercial speech. For commercial speech, you can do some of that. It's a lower level of scrutiny. It's intermediate, which is still elevated, but not as high as strict scrutiny. So the opinion comes out, and cities across the country, and by the way, that opinion is not a 9-0 or even a 5-4. For those of you who have ever read Supreme Court opinions, you can have a concurring opinion, which says, I reached the same conclusion, but for different reasons. There's three concurrences. There's no clear majority. So it leads to confusion and division on what is the path forward? Is it the majority opinion with the concurrences? And there's been a flavor of that that's played out since. Immediately after 2015, some communities sought to very promptly adapt. We're gonna, okay, we're reading the opinion, we're gonna navigate it. And the way a lot of communities did that was they hired consultants, who they did not, not their city attorneys, but other consultants who are legal. There was one firm in the city, in the state of Florida, that was principally doing this. The attorney at that firm has since contracted health issues and other issues that sort of taken them out of the frame, and after that, a lot of communities said, well, enough people have done it that we're comfortable doing versions of whatever that is. I wanna read to you, not chapter and verse, a little bit of a Law Review article that came out after this that sort of explains this landscape a little better. "In the aftermath of Reed, it is all the more important for municipal governments to periodically address their sign code's compliance with the First Amendment. In doing so, many lawyers and planners look for existing laws they can copy or cling to as an example of what is defensible. This is a natural response, considering the complexity of the law and financial risk of litigation, which increased after Reed. Nevertheless, the propriety and defensibility of sign regulations vary drastically based on the nature, vary, V-A-R-Y, drastically based on the nature of the jurisdiction and its policy goals. A regulation that is perfect for one setting could be very damaging and lead to successful challenges in another. Unfortunately, there's no one-size-fits-all for sign regulations, and such an approach would leave a lot on the table in terms of achieving important governmental objectives." However, there's some general guidelines, and they walk through some guidelines like avoid unnecessary content-based regulations, avoid unnecessary exceptions, like unless you're the Catholic Church or something like that. Avoid, regulation of commercial advertising is still subject to intermediate scrutiny, have a substitution clause, regulation or prohibition of off-premises billboard signs is permissible, and it goes on. This is a Law Review article from the Stepson Law Review. I wanna see when it was published, in 2020, so five years out. There's since been some more case law that's kind of clarified a little bit of the concurrences. But suffice to say, what you have before you is a response to top-down interpretation of regulation. We are responding to what the Supreme Court has said, and that's what's prompting the impetus behind what you have before you. Consequently, in a landscape where it varies community by community and things can be challenged, you have like 15 pages of whereas clauses. I have never once submitted anything else to this community that looks like that. But that's not how I operate. However, comma, if we are trying to put forward something that says, we know that this is sort of an amorphous Rorschach legal test of what do you see, is this okay? We knew the landscape when we went in, we've given our hat tip and head nod to it, and so we believe what we are doing here aligns with all of this. I don't expect all of you to understand every whereas clause. If you wish for those to be curtailed, they can be curtailed. Understand, that's why they're there, is to add credence to, if we have to defend it, it cannot be said that they ignored the authority. We have cited the authority, and it was updated for your purposes." Separately, the length of the ordinance itself, you presently have a sign code that is like four pages, and this is like 24 pages or something like that, when you get to the actual ordinance itself. Again, I note, when I was hired and I was retained, I was asked, provide us a new sign code. Well, what would you like us to do in this new sign code? Make it legal. I've told you the legal landscape is.
Make it defensible.
Make it defensible. Make it defensible is a better term. Make it defensible. Without any specific guidance as to, and this is our core concern in this community, or this is an ill we have had in the past that we wish to see cured. So what I've done is what I would say, to use an analogy, you have before you a Cadillac. It's got every bell and whistle, some you may never use. If you want a Honda Civic, I love a Civic, I drove a Civic. If you want a Civic, tell me. If you say, this is too much, our little beach community doesn't need all of this, then just tell me what you wish to excise, and as long as that doesn't go against what we can and can't do, then we will excise it or change it appropriately. I flagged in the draft, there are various places where you have highlighted yellows. That's to show you where your discretion is highest. If you wanna make something 10 square feet instead of 12, cool. This doesn't, the case law on that doesn't go in too much into, as long as you're not getting to the point that you're making it impossible, it's like five centimeters or something.
What's the catch-22 on it being as thorough or as comprehensive as it is?
I think the catch-22 is precisely the moment we had, when each of you walked in and kind of lifted your eyebrows and looked at each other and, without saying anything, sort of came like, what is this? This is a lot. Is it as intuitive to your average member of the public? And are they going to contend that this is written so dense that it is meant to not be understood? So that we could, so if there is a catch-22 to be had, that is it. I would be, and I just wanna finish this one point, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak over you, Member Hart, but this, as I told you, the commission has seen this and has given some guidance on a version of this. One of your commissioners was very vocal, that they felt that the actual opinion given was that I wrote something that would be legally challenged so I could make money on the back end when the challenge happens. I submit to you, I am not for want of work and I don't need to gin it up. But beyond that, they also made the point that they feel, they've read the Reed opinion, and they feel that this is not suitable in light of Reed. It's too much, in their estimation, and what they described as a clear decision from the Supreme Court. I would say, given the concurrences, it's not a clear decision, and the case law since has kind of borne that out. But, all of that to say, one of your commissioners has expressed like this, why can't we have two pages or four pages? Make it clean, Chris, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do. If I was going to tell, telling people who are not trained lawyers, what should I be looking at in this? The highlighted portions are one place, if you're wishing to just kind of stick with it. Another is, there is one section of it that is specifically entitled prohibited signs? Are there signs that we are prohibiting that you're like, no, in Bella Beach, I want that kind of sign, I want a sandwich board sign, or whatever the thing is? Then just tell me. I wanna be very clear, I am not a policymaker in your community. I don't wish to be a policymaker in your community. You folks are the clearinghouse for things that will get to the commission and be policy. If there's anything in this you want changed, it does not hurt my feelings, let's talk about it, let's do it, so it reflects what this community wishes to do with its home rule powers. But what I've given you is, here's everything. Tell me what you want, what you don't want, what works, what doesn't work, and we will adapt it appropriately to this community. So that's sort of my little elevator speech, and not sub-elevator, maybe subway ride, speech on how we got here. I'm happy to answer any questions specifically. The big thrust of Reed is that non-commercial speech can only be regulated in a content-neutral way. So the general notion that we're gonna, you know, a political sign can be 10 feet big and a sign for the Boy Scouts popcorn sale can be four, we can't do that. The other one is, the way that this has worked is we're generally regulating them, with the exception of one provision that mirrors state law, and it's only in there because it mirrors state law. Generally speaking, the number of signs, temporary signs, for example, are uniform. And so if you say a private property can only have five temporary signs, in an election season, that would mean you got your president, your senate, and maybe three commissioners, two commissioners, and a ballot measure. And the person next door can have, just go to war, God is love, I love the beach, save the manatees, they get five. We're not worried about, oh, well, it's an election, they get more. No, it's five temporary signs. And that's really, like, that's really the crux of what this tries to ameliorate in a code. Your code had not been revisited in a very long time, certainly not since Reed and its progeny, so this seeks to ameliorate that.
I love your Rorschach definition. That's what I felt when I looked at some of these things. It's a matter of interpretation, et cetera, of what you're doing. I think what we better do is start with each person, if they have a per, we'll start with Hart first.
You're all up here now?
No, I hope not. Just highlight.
Well, I wanted to know what was the difference, just for clarity, the difference between an RL district and an RM district?
Yeah, so that is uniform regardless of this code.
Right.
That's your, you guys have residential medium and residential low.
So it all has to do with the.
It's just your zoning code districts. It's not creating something new. That's how all of your zoning works in the city.
Where are L and Ms?
So the RM is gonna be from where the jurisdictional line on the west side of Gulf Boulevard, which is 19th Street, beach access, is one house, is Bella Shore, and then goes into condominium multifamily use of that. From there, all the way up to, I think it's 3500 across from Marina, is the RM.
Okay.
District two. And then the RL, District one, is the, everything else, pretty much all the side streets and private streets.
Makes sense.
Single-family homes.
The absence of all the, you've got a lot of detail. Does the absence of this detail mean one council person felt that this opened up for a lot of lawsuits because somebody's gonna challenge it? But if it's not there, then you have to debate every issue that comes up as well, don't you?
That was my contention, yes, sir. This is another way of looking at it outside of the car analogy, is this is the insurance policy. This is the just-in-case-it-ever comes-up, it's been addressed. If somebody decides to install a neon sign, well, we don't have any neon signs in Bella Beach, so we don't need to regulate neon signs. We've never had that issue, but we've seen the marketplace start doing things that it never did before. Homes didn't used to be hotels. So you anticipate, you see the issues other communities have had. I was speaking with our newest member earlier before the meeting started and explaining, in addition to serving as a city attorney, I also have the privilege of serving as panel counsel for insurance defense for other cities. I can't tell you I've had a lot of sign code litigation, but to the extent I'm aware of the litigation landscape, it informs my policy. It creates more robust policy, because you're like, well, I've seen how this goes sideways, so let's just anticipate it and not have that problem.
It's a different issue, but I'd said to Kyle last week, one of the things we might wanna look at is, is what's becoming more and more popular is the rental of amenities, swimming pools.
Swim, yeah. I'm familiar with the platforms.
And while we have a restriction on Airbnb, there's nothing in there about amenities.
Yep, and I provided that guidance, and that's, you know, yes, absolutely.
So the more we address upfront, at least, the more we're declaring in advance to someone, here's what you need to know if you wanna put something out there.
And in a current political landscape in Florida where the legislature has expressed no qualms about preempting local regulation, the sooner you become proactive rather than reactive, the more likely you are to be, you know, grandfathered, or, you know, hey, you did the Indian and Jones and slipped out of Blood Rock clothes. Yeah, Airbnb is a perfect example. If after June 2011, if you didn't read the tea leaves before June 2011, to that, even if it didn't come to your community until five years later, it's too late.
How much of what we're doing in here is driven by all the conflict? And I don't know a lot about it, but I know there was a lot of conflict about the sign out here. The, or at least I have heard there was a lot of conflict about the new sign for the city hall here.
Zero of what I have done has been driven by any controversy in your community. I drafted this based on, not a uniform template, this was customized to your community and your zoning districts. I leave it to you folks to tell me, hey, this hasn't factored in, you know, when I did a version of this in Indian Rocks Beach, and they haven't adopted theirs either, they said, hey, we've got the big sign for crabby bills, how do we work that into this? Okay.
Okay, 'cause early on in this, on page 10, whereas the city finds anything beside the road which distracts the driver, so I thought.
There's also an exception for city-issued.
I saw that later on, that, okay, the city gets.
But that's ordinary.
Is that, because could somebody claim, well, how come the city gets to do this, but nobody else can do it?
Because the city is different than everybody else inherently.
It's government.
We're not private citizens, we're government, and we have obligations to provide advisories. A private citizen doesn't have to tell people about hurricane routes and advisories in every manner of other thing. So we have the permission to regulate differently.
So the business.
It's probably the city's got a vice department and we don't.
The business of outdoor advertising should be prohibited, but we use this sign. I'm not being critical, I'm just bringing up.
No, you're trying to understand, you're conceptualizing.
We advertise yoga, we advertise weddings. Is that in conflict with any of this? Because yoga becomes a commercial application, doesn't it?
Well, I'm not sure specifically how the yoga operates here and where that commercial line, just, I'm not trying to be mealy-mouthed. I don't know about how the yoga space is used and how, you know.
It's just wrong to mine, as I'm looking at this, are we in conflict with some of the things, with what we're proposing, are we in conflict with things we're already doing?
I don't think so personally, because if you look at, for instance, the yoga, you're making it known, this room is reserved for this time, for this event. So if you are hoping to make use of this room during that time, please know, it's already been reserved. And plenty of communities have. That's a pretty consistent thing. We're not advertising, come join yoga, Bella Beach yoga, we're saying, this is an event that is scheduled by her.
Area of sign, page 13, double sign shall be construed so the perimeter of both faces coincide or parallel, not more than 24 inches apart. How does a double-faced sign that's 24 inches apart?
The depth of the sign is two feet. If that's, if I'm looking, if I'm getting to where you're looking, so.
Page 13, last paragraph.
That's like the thickness of like a monument sign.
You got it marked.
Oh, I see, it's how wide.
It's the depth.
Sure, okay. Yeah.
But again, that's a highlighted portion. If you folks think that two feet is too much, make it one foot, whatever you wanna do. I'm here for your input.
I had a personal one, and it has to do with signs on seawalls. It says, each property shall be allowed one sign. I've got four on mine.
Don't tell nobody.
Well.
Well, it's not out here, and that's something that.
It connotes the property. It's, the reality of it is, if I don't put them there, I've got boats and everybody else pulling up thinking it's public property. So how do we account for that? Because there are other pieces of property like that in Bella.
Great question. I mean genuinely, again, that's something that's very particular to your community, and that's the kind of feedback I'm looking for, saying, hey, can you take a look at this? We can absolutely take a look at it. When I'm drafting as a lawyer, I'm not looking at like the Mr. Hart's neighbor, I don't know your seawalls that well, I don't know every nook and cranny of your community like you do, and that's why I value your folks' input in the policymaking process.
And specifically, we are not prohibiting the use of private property, no trespassing.
I didn't see that anywhere.
There was a preclusion in here, this does not prohibit, as I recall.
One second, I'm switching through several tabs on one screen. So the warning sign or safety sign, you mean a sign?
Is it page 29? Yeah.
Yeah. Under applicability 86-5, signs posted as no trespassing in the manner provided for in Florida statutes in RX, this chapter, is not regulated by this, yes.
I have a constant problem, people getting on the, coming to the property.
That was 86-5, I believe it's like around page 29 of the document.
Yeah.
So he could have multiple on his seawall, as long as they're.
If they're all no trespassing signs, then they're not covered by that.
Right.
If it's private property, no trespassing, and he's just got them spaced out, those signs are not regulated by this. But if you have five signs and one of them says, go Red Sox, you know, down the rays, I love the water, then yeah, then we're getting closer to five, you know, to a number of
On flags, we specifically regulate flag poles, we're about flags on houses. And I'm not trying to create problems.
No, you're not creating problems. My smile was because, quite honestly, when this was before the commission, candidly, the most time was spent discussing flags, flag sizes, number of flags, height of the pole, size of the flag. So that was where, to the extent the commission substantively made suggestions, it mostly had to do with the flag provisions. And so my smile was like, that's funny, you guys are honing in on that particular element as well. That's all my smile was in this community.
Remind me who the commission is?
The legislative body of seven members, so the mayor.
Oh.
The council.
Sorry.
Interchangeable between the cities.
Sorry, I forgot where I was. Council, the city council.
I just didn't know if that was like a county thing.
No, 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 that's the council, the city council. My apologies.
Continue, Mr. Hart. I'm still the favorite, don't start none, then we'll be none.
So flags mounted to houses, I wanna make sure I understand your question there. There was a great controversy to the south of us, if somebody would like draped a flag over their roof, of course, you know, the size of, you know, something that you would fly out of a military base for everybody to see for miles. Are you talking about a mounted flag or a flag that's just like?
Let's say you've got a flag pole, and you put up a American flag, and you put up a military flag, and then you've got a flag hanging off your house that says, the best college team there is, go Gators.
Everybody makes mistakes, understood.
Sure.
Yeah, you know.
But.
My point is, are we gonna, I think it's kind of where you're coming from, are we gonna start really nitpicking if somebody throws up a sign for the weekend that's promoting their college team, or their high school team, or whatever, if they've already got a couple teams, a couple flags out there, are they gonna get cited for that? I don't think that's the purpose of this, is it?
I don't think it's the purpose of this. Said differently, though, I am always very, very strongly against the idea of passing ordinances or statutes that are intended to send a message, but we're never going to enforce them.
Right.
That's not what policymaking should be.
Right.
And so if we say, you know what, I don't care if somebody has every inch of the exterior of their home covered in flags, and I can't see the windows, that's their right, that's their private property. If that's the culture of this community, so be it, tell me. But I can tell you, I very likely, if you live next door to that house, there's somebody in your community who's gonna say, I can't believe I have to look at this thing.
Yeah.
We're not an HOA. I'm not trying to, you know, they're not keeping things pretty enough, but there have, if there's, if there are lines to be drawn, let's draw it, is my.
Right.
I'm not invested in whether it's two flags or five flags, that's for you folks to decide.
How you, I do my question.
Thanks, Hart, very good job. Let's go to the new member.
All right, thank you.
Please introduce yourself to the new group.
Thank you, I'm Kim Shaw Elliott, Lenit 1-1, 9th Street, just around the corner here, glad to be with you all.
Thank you, Kim. Welcome.
Well, I thank you very much, City Attorney, for that introduction, because you hit on all the points that I wanted to talk about. So I don't wanna be the new person that shows up and starts asking or drilling at things where people have worked really hard at coming up with a solution. So I'm glad that those issues have already been noted. So if I could ask a little bit more depth, one is, I appreciate the fact that your first assignment was to come up with a difficult ordinance relating to signs, but I am wondering if there was something more than that. And I'm sure you're aware, this community has been rather legal-oriented, shall we say, and there's been lots of controversy around that, and a lot of constitutional issues raised, where seemingly may have been hypersensitive about those constitutional issues, and so is that, was there something else? Is there something else that people are trying to address by coming up with this ordinance and the level of detail regarding the constitutional issues?
The short answer is, I think that question can be bifurcated. The length and depth of this was not driven by some explicit or implicit mandate. My draft was done in the vacuum of trying to balance the nuances of the law. Were there motivations by individual council members when they asked me or expressed that a sign code was a priority in the form of ordinance changes? Potentially, if there was, it was not communicated to me directly as, this is the ill we need to address, or this is the problem that was lingering two and three years ago that we're trying to put to bed. That very well may exist, I've not been, that's not been communicated to me. I would defer to Patty and Kyle who have, and I'm not trying to put either of you on the spot, but who, whose tenure here precedes my own, if there's additional context I'm not aware of.
I think that the main controversy was from former members of council saying that the, our current sign ordinance was unconstitutional, and it was mainly by the regulation of what specific signs and what language, which, you know, he said through the court cases, you can't regulate what the message is. And I think that was the main reason that it got looked at and.
Can you give some historical clarity to that?
Your prior mayor was a practicing lawyer.
I know, yeah.
Temporary signs, I think it was more like telling people, like, how we regulated Temporary signs, I think it was more like telling people, like how we regulated political signs versus other signs, and all that.
That's got so screwed up. Let's, you know, we could talk about that forever. But that came up at every situation during election time. And that, we got beat to death in this committee. Finally, that's over, as far as this committee.
So it's over from a personality standpoint, potentially, and I'm not, that's not a judgment, it's just saying, one person was, it's my understanding, one person was particularly vocal and attuned to that. I will tell you, you have not changed your code, so inasmuch as one person has expressed that, that doesn't stop somebody else from expressing that same sentiment. And so, in every community where that has, where read has not been addressed, your election season will, you will be lulled into feeling, "It's over, we haven't heard anything about it." And then two election cycles go by, and somebody puts 20 signs lining the road in front of their house, says, "Well, that's obviously too many, they can't do that." Well, they can only have five political signs. And then they come to a city attorney and I say, "We can't regulate..." Yes, our code says five political signs. I would not enforce that provision because of read, because that is a number based on the content. And so, communities who have not, and there are many in Florida who have not yet changed our code, you're not alone in this. Some have kicked the can because they get these drafts, or they don't know how to reconcile them. But every time, election season is when you feel this pain again.
Absolutely.
And not every election season, which almost makes worse.
Would adoption of this prevent or, and/or eliminate a reappearance of whatever the problems were before?
Without specific knowledge of the problems before, beyond that expressed concern, it'll quell it. I travel the state and educate on operation of government and ethics and open government. And my three takeaways, regardless of the topic I'm presenting on, is, don't screw up, you're human, you're gonna screw up, and don't hide it. And the third one is, just 'cause someone says you screwed up, doesn't mean you screwed up. And I will say that adopting this ordinance will not prevent somebody from accusing the community of getting it wrong, either in the form of this ordinance, or you didn't address it enough. So I can't stop controversy, but it would quell the legal concern. It would directly address the legal concern raised.
Or a barrel of attorneys could come in and challenge it, and that's something we can't say, "Oh, no, we're gonna have..."
That can happen for any reason.
It's not, we're rights up in there and says, "That's not legal. Ha, 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 ha. Let's not go into that situation." We'll be here all afternoon.
My second question related to the format, and you've already noted that, that you've never done one in this particular way. So why 12 pages of whereas', and why was this not done perhaps as a separate brief that would be submitted to the city? And in what format would this ultimately take? And I'm giving you a compound question, I realize.
No, I understand, now I'm taking it down.
But, for instance, is this sort of like a preamble that then is not part of the actual ordinance that's seen when people cite to the ordinance, or...
The whereas clauses do not get codified.
Okay.
The whereas clauses do not get codified. It is in function and operation, in fact, a preamble. It is a preamble that is also, I'm trying to get to my window here where I have this pulled up. It is a preamble that is also accompanied by the fact that it says, "All the recitations above are considered incorporated here." And you don't, when we post this to MuniCode, which is a platform by which we publish our ordinances, they don't see those first 12 pages.
Okay.
That is functionally a legal memo of sorts. And again, the reason it's in there is, if and when we do receive, should we receive some kind of legal challenge, it signals to the court when they say, "Oh, we believe that the city failed to consider..." No, we didn't. There it is. If you folks or the commission say, "We don't want all this in there, I want one page of whereas', Randy," I'll make it happen. I'll make it happen. This was, again, drafted saying, "This is the most robust way I can make this look, because it's easier to subtract than to add," in practice. In format, every ordinance I give you has whereas clauses. There might be three, there might be three pages, there might be 30 pages. Every ordinance has some whereas clauses. That format is the case, it's just the level of detail. And I will admit to you, I could write this with less, and there's some, the law's nothing if nothing, there are some redundancies in there. I can streamline that, for sure, for sure, for sure. Writing a legal memo helps. But the difference between this being a memo that I write to you versus a whereas clause that is incorporated as part of the findings, signals to the court, the legislative body, the council, have these, looked at them and felt, "Yes, based on this background and the counsel I've received on it, uncomfortable."
So it's... It's codified.
It doesn't, the whereas clauses do not get codified.
These are guidelines.
Correct. They are, this is what, this is the historical record of all the factors that were considered before adopting this.
So it becomes part of the legislative history, so people have an understanding of what was considered, as well as what their thoughts were in enacting that.
Well stated. And to take it out of this, whenever we get to the end of this topic, there's a second issue that Kyle intends to broach about regulation of pools and pools, pool heights. And when that issue came up, the first question Kyle and I drafted is, or asked ourselves was, "How did they get here?" Let's look at the ordinance where they said it was 18 inches, or 20 inches, or whatever the number is. And we look at, what are the minutes, and what do the whereas clauses say? Does it say like, "Whereas, we just lost this lawsuit and we're doing it?" Or does it say, "Whereas, we find it needs to be changed without any detail." Should something like this be adopted, somebody goes back, there's gonna be no mystery as to how we got here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I mean, the last issue that you also raised, thank you, is the length. And with that, I go to the question of readability and enforceability. So that, to me, an ordinance is something that the general populace should be able to read and understand what's prohibited and what's allowed without getting a legal opinion. Now, there are always exceptions to that, but also, if somebody comes and says, "Hey, I want to put a sign out in my yard," and they ask for your help, "I want to fill out an application, do I have it right?" You know, you're gonna be in a position of saying, "I have no idea. I'm not gonna give you legal advice." You know, whereas, it seems that we should have something that people can understand and know how to comply with. So for that, I have concerns about this, because I myself have trouble reading it. As an alternative, I just decided to, well, let's just pull up Indian Rock's beach, they're right next door. We're not at all like them in the sense that they have significant commercial activity, we're almost all residential. But, okay, they're next door, they're a beach community, they have to deal with issues. What does theirs look like? And it's a very readable statute, and it's 12 pages.
And I'm their city attorney. And they've had a draft before them for three years, but they've been principally focused on short-term rental regulation.
Yeah.
And they are looking to modify their code in a format not too dissimilar from yours. Their code has not been updated since read.
Ah.
So you're looking at a code that requires adaptation. Other communities that have adopted something more recently, City of Dunedin, City of Tarpon Springs, full disclosure, we represented both those communities at the time they were adopted, we don't represent either of them presently. If you search the state for post-read, you'd want to look for something that's been adopted since, let's say, 2016 onward. And you can, when you're on MuniCode, you can see it shows like that last year. So if you're looking at samples from other communities to inform a future product, that would be my suggestion. But I do want to inform, inasmuch as you're looking at, look what IRB has, IRB is looking to change their sign code.
But if we look at, just in terms of format, it is very readable, and it's laid out in an easy-to-read structure. You can go straight to, "Oh, what kind of sign am I thinking about? Oh, there's a section right on it." It tells us what's prohibited and what's not, it tells us sign limitations, excuse me, size limitations. So just in terms of format, I just found this...
More readable.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's valid feedback, I appreciate that.
I know an incredible amount of work went into this, so I'm sure everybody's very appreciative of that.
I don't know whether they are or not, it's less important to me whether they appreciate it, and more important to me that it aligns on what you want as a community.
Is that it?
That's it for now.
Okay, that's good. Welcome back. She had a little situation where her husband was built black. Now he's back, and she's happy, and...
Yes.
It's your turn.
Okay. So I just had some questions on page six. What is a pole sign? I don't know what a pole sign was. I thought maybe it was a billboard, but...
One moment, I want to make sure I go back.
It's in the definition.
So in the definition, a pole sign on page 20 is a permanent ground sign that is supported by one or more poles, more than four feet in height, and otherwise separated from the ground by air. So if there's a sign on a pole that's at least four feet high, it's a pole sign.
That, yeah, like... A pole sign.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a big one.
I don't have one of those. I'm gonna get one now.
The picture or the pole sign?
I was like, "What is that? So on page seven, you referenced the dangers of unsafe signs.
In the whereas clauses?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
What would you consider an unsafe sign? One that's falling apart, or...
Structurally unstable, or some other means, I guess if there was...
Or too far into the right of way, I mean, there's a lot of things that...
And material that was toxic, I mean...
There is a definition on page 22.
Oh, I should have read page 22, too.
And for the purposes of the record, if you're pointing to page 22, "An unsafe sign means a sign posing an immediate peril or reasonably foreseeable threat of injury or damage to persons or property," which could be any of the things that were just stated.
Okay.
It leaves up to interpretation of the inspector, really.
Yeah. I will tell you, the legend or key to reading this starts with the definitions section. The definitions section is very robust to avoid too much of, "I'm not sure if this is that." Your second most important section, then, is the prohibited signs section, and it has a list of signs, all of which are defined in the definitions section. And I would say that where, for your average person, that is where the most heavy lifting is done in this ordinance. Defining signs and saying what we don't allow is really where most of the work is done in ordinance like that.
I was gonna suggest, under definitions, if we could include the RL and RM, just so people can reference that. Because I looked back and forth, and I didn't, I know we'd gone through some of the zoning stuff, but didn't know what it was referencing at that point.
Okay. Continue.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if temporary's on here.
Yeah, definitions.
It is, it most definitely is, because that's where the...
Yes.
The biggest part of the ordinance is, is in temporary signs.
Does the electronic version do hyperlinks back to definitions?
No, it's not hyperlink across, it does lend itself to a Control F search.
Okay.
But as far as linking to, no, it's not fully cross-referenced.
But back to your comment, the definitions of the zonings, that'll be, this'll be incorporated into the entire code, so it'll be...
It'd be there somewhere.
It is otherwise in the code, so we can make a, I can make a hat tip to it to make it a little easier within the ordinance.
And the other question I had was about the RL and the RM, so we got that answered.
That's covered. Very good. Any other observations from this committee before I get started?
One question I had, which is an obscure...
I could have bet on that.
On the bottom of page 34, when it talks about rights of appeal, I thought this was kind of interesting, because it said that if you make an appeal, and the board doesn't get around to a meeting, then your appeal is considered automatically denied. How does that support due process?
Great question. It is, it supports due process in terms of a, then they have a subsequent appellate right, and the record below would reflect that there was not a substantive analysis done. We would not just sit on something for, we'd make an effort, and there is provision, I believe there is provision in there for...
In our Board of Adjustment section, it says that the magistrate overawarded it.
Right, and it would be subsequently, they have second appellate rights, they have the, there would be notice, there would be, the opportunity to be heard is the application submission itself, I think would be the contention, but I would be happy to look at that and see if that comports with other, if there are other analogous code provisions on the due process, right? I think that's a good question.
Because, and just from a practical standpoint, from the citizen's perspective, one, there's always an argument that, "You didn't get around to it because you wanted to, you wanted to be mean to me." You know, you said most of my wanted to, you know, and everybody else gets this heard within 30 days, and, "Well, why didn't you bother getting together when my application came along?" But the other thing is a matter of cost. Obviously, it's a much different matter to appeal to the local board as opposed to having to present at court law. And so it's a significant cost difference that way. So maybe it should be the other way around, that if it's, if the board doesn't meet within that amount of time, maybe it's automatically approved. I mean, something to just motivate people to add.
No, I will, I will look at that, and I am part of a law firm, I will ask my colleagues, one, if they, what their thoughts are on that, and two, it might be cleaner to just make it a right of appeal to the first district, not the first district, but the local circuit court. I think you'd want a more explicit local finding than what an administrative holding is, before you get there, the court has to deal with a record from an administrative level. But I can definitely look at the due process concern there, I think it's well stated.
Along Kim's point, why not, wouldn't have to do with just this. I agree with you, if the council didn't want to address it, or didn't want to pass it, they could just...
It's a pocket veto.
Yeah, could ignore. Can't language be in that says, "If you don't get to it on the first round, first meeting, whatever that subsequent meeting is, you have to address it in the following meeting." And give the citizens the benefit of forcing council to make a decision.
And here's the Board of Adjustment, but yes.
Yeah. So they're not being forced to have to take it to a higher authority.
Yep.
And that's what the council's here for. I mean, it's a good point.
Yeah. Again, the feedback's well taken, and I can definitely look to that and revisit that in a subsequent draft.
Why do we hold our council candidates to 72 hours to remove signs, which I think they did a great job after this last election? Yet we give every other politician 30 days, and some of them are still out there nearly a year later.
So you're talking about the timing for the removal of signs.
Yeah, if we look on page 39, the usage and removal.
Yeah, that come, that is, when I said earlier about state statute, generally, that was pulled from states, in fact, citation is within there. I would not mess with those days and numbers, because that is a, that is language for...
They are yellow.
They are yellow. And on later review, I realized, I got a little, every time I saw dates and things, I was flagging them.
So we're gonna hold the council members responsible, or candidates, or local candidates, to remove those signs quickly, but there's nothing we can do about the, any other level of political campaign?
Hold on, I'm pulling, it says, "Each candidate, whether federal, state, county, or district office, shall make a good faith effort to remove all of his or her political campaign advertisements within 30 days." The 30 days comes from the ordinance, from the state statute. The city office 72 hours is a local regulation, and your commission talked about that particular language, so the 30 days is, I wouldn't make it more than that, that's state statute.
No, I'm just saying...
The 72 hours, your commission, your council, sorry, forgive me, your council talked about exactly that regulation, they're like, "Yeah, I mean, insert state politician, Anapolina Luna doesn't live in Bella Beach. Bella Beach is like less than two miles square. If you live here and you're running here, you should be able to get up and down every street within three days and take care of your business," was sort of the sentiment, not those words. And so the shorter timeline was actually welcomed by the council members saying, and being held to that more stringent standard, because their sentiment was, "As a candidate who lives here and is serving this community, you would continue to be serving your community to beautify it within three days."
The reality of it is, any of the other candidate's signs were put up by local residents anyway.
Potentially.
Because you had to get permission from the property owner to put it up.
Potentially, generally speaking, yes.
And there's still some of these up, and you wonder, "What's the point of having them up?"
Right.
So I was just saying, 30 days, if you're gonna hold the council to 72 hours, why not everybody else? But you can't.
You can't, that's the state statute, yeah, the 30 days comes from the state statute.
And what's the hammer if you don't remove it?
You get chopped.
It's a violation of 106, 1435 of the statute, or a code citation from RM, yes.
While we're at that section, in B2, it's, the time begins after having been eliminated as a candidate. I assume that means they've withdrawn, but does it also include... I assume that means they've withdrawn, but does it also include you weren't elected?
Correct. Yeah, if you lose a primary, for example. And that is also, that is also the language that one A, B, and C of one oh six, one four five, one four three five, it says, the actual statute says each candidate, whether for a federal, state, county, or district office, shall make a good faith effort to remove all of his or her political campaign advertisements within thirty days after A, withdrawal of his or her candidacy, B, having been eliminated as a candidate, or C, being elected to office.
Very good. All right, thank you.
And then it continues, however a candidate, da-da-da-da. But that is, that language is a mirror of the statute.
Okay, thanks.
Everybody, everybody finished?
Wait for you.
Okay. I too went through this, and as anything else goes, I know that it wasn't codified. These are all guidelines, et cetera. And when they hand you something like this and say, take a look at that, it's kind of overwhelming to a lot of people.
Absolutely.
And you think, what? This exists? Well, my background's been in this field, so I know that it's still up to the council and the attorneys and the judges whenever it comes down to the bare facts. And these guidelines are here for a purpose, so we don't get overrun. I've been in this city for, since nineteen eighty-nine. And it's been pretty good all the way through. A lot of fine people. And a lot of fine people on this board. I've served on a board for Patty alone, since.
Since I've been here and before.
Since I moved in. But I appreciate, this group, the zoning board, has always had five members. I'm glad you joined, Kim. And Patty would always say that we're the only board she ever had in the city that's always got five members. And that's kind of, that's kind of a compliment to us. We've seen attorneys go, we've seen city managers go, we've seen mayors go, but we're still here. And we do the best we can with what we got. And Randy had presented something that, it ain't easy. But it simplifies something that tries to touch every base, and we all know it doesn't touch every base. Cause they're invented all the time. So, and the city manager, God bless him, he's probably the, the wheels are Patty, and she's been very cooperative with us, keeping us informed. And right now, I would like to call for a motion to recommend that we have no objections to what was presented to us on the ordinance twenty-two, twenty-three day show one. I'm open for a motion.
There were some points though, that I think maybe was the follow-up.
To address that, I would say, you know, recommend approval subject to the commentary given today, otherwise given, and I've been documenting that, as has the clerk. And of course, the minutes will reflect the business of the body. And so it's not, we don't just throw those away, and I don't do anything with them. I'm taking under advisement all of your comments thus far. So you could, you know, move to, yeah, move to recommend approval subject to the input this board has otherwise given. Is, I would say, probably the cleanest way to do that from a commentary procedure.
Are you rewording my motion?
No, sir, I'm advising the client on the requested input relative to the motion.
Oh, that was under discussion that I didn't call for? Okay.
Understood.
What he said, so.
Any further discussion on the motion that?
Yes. Does that motion include a reformatting, a reorganization of it? Or we're taking it in the form that it exists now?
It just says it presented to us.
Then I don't support it. I would ask for it to be slightly reorganized and a little more direct. Cause I think the average citizen and probably most of the administrators within the community would not be able to implement.
You don't have to put that on a part of the motion?
Well, it's, it's my reasoning for not supporting the motion.
Do I hear a second?
You may asking for a second motion?
Yes, of course. So, and with all deference to the chair, cause everybody's kind of looking at me like, what's happening? Remember Hart has made a motion to recommend approval subject to the general commentary. The chair is looking for a second to that motion. That is the motion on the floor.
And if there's no second, then you go back to discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
We could include Kim's points on this. It is a complex document. And the issue is, if we continue to work at it, does it mean people are gonna read it anymore? They may or may not. But maybe we do have an obligation to make sure that it's easily understood, people are gonna have to refer to it to find out, what do I have to do here? And you don't wanna have to hire an attorney to get an interpretation on it. It should be pretty clear to the majority.
Point of order.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? To Hart's motion?
I'm not sure what your motion is anymore.
I'll withdraw the motion, because I think it needs to be restated.
Okay.
So it means the motion failed, and if there was no second, then the motion wasn't carried forward.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Or make, as a matter of order, I'm looking for a motion to, from this committee, in with connection with the ordinance number twenty, twenty-three dash oh one, that we accept what was promulgated to us through this document.
But I think what this, the committee is saying is, no, we're not ready to motion to accept that based on the way it is right now. I believe that's what they're saying.
So my view. You, Hart?
So I, there isn't a motion to accept it, unless we restate the motion.
Okay. Is there a motion that would like to be presented by the board?
I think we can come to agreement on that, based on, except, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing out of this is that we would accept this with the changes that Randy has documented, clearing up some of the points, and trying to reorder it in a manner that would make it a little bit easier for the average.
Reader.
Reader to comprehend. That means putting more work on you, Randy.
I understand, I work for you folks.
But if we, if we could accomplish those objectives, to include the changes we've discussed, and to make it more reader-friendly, and in order, then I'd make a motion to accept based on that, subject to that.
And I would second that motion. Would you restate the motion?
No, you got it on tape.
Yeah.
Member's motion, the motion was to approve the ordinance subject to their general input and to the ordinance being reformatted in a manner that is more easily understood.
Thank you.
The motion was made by Hart, seconded by Kim. Any further discussion?
By framing that as an approval of the ordinance, but we're asking it to be rewritten, is that inconsistent?
My understanding is what we want to do is reorder it, and just try to simplify the existing terms, existing.
Are we instead?
I think her question is one of procedure, and her question is, if I'm generally blessing this and saying, Randy, rework it, and then I send it to the commission, having not seen it again, have I, have I really, I don't know that I approve the way Randy redoes it. It's sort of what I'm intuiting. And so I would tell you, subject to the manager's input, this is a matter that while it is important to the commission, it is more important than that they get it done right than they get it done fast. This board meets with some regularity. Would you, would you staff, at a staff level, be amenable to bringing back whatever revised draft we have?
Yes. I was wondering, is there any recommendation on how to simplify it, or, I mean, or is?
Yeah, and again, if you just, I know that this ordinance is going to be revised, but just in terms of a model for organization, I thought it was fairly well done. I'm sure there are others that could be good also. But I thought this one required a lot of flipping back and forth, a lot of, a lot of disparate treatment for different types of things, which in part is intentional, I understand that. But if it could be consolidated a little bit, and a general format of, of, you know, here's what's allowed, here's what's not allowed, here are the different types of signs, here are the dimensions, this is how we enforce. I mean, it would just seem to have a better flow than some of these others.
To that point though, I noticed that we define all these different types of signs, and then we also prohibit specific signs. But then it really kind of comes down to the two districts, the zoning districts. And if you go to, like, the residential medium district, it, it says a permit, one wall, window, or monument sign. So to me, that specifically addresses three exact types of signs. So in essence, it's saying that everything else is prohibited. And in that district, you have the most flexibility, because there's less, you're allowed in residential law. So maybe if we reworked it some way to prohibit everything else, it just isn't zoned. Because, I mean, like, this is why I have an example of some signs just in the RM district, because technically, that's a, that's a pole sign or a monopole sign, it's not a monument sign. And that brings up another question, is how do we wanna regulate, like, the signs that are already in place?
Well, you addressed that in here though, I believe. You said if they're not in compliance, they're, if I'm reading it properly, if they're not in compliance, they're essentially grandfathered until they become.
Deteriorate.
Deteriorated, or what was the definition you were looking up earlier? You know, if there's a danger, if there's a danger to them, if something's structurally unsafe.
Okay, so we're.
And so, and it's seen in my interpretation that you addressed that, I believe.
So yeah, as long as we're okay with that. The only other thing that was brought to my attention when I looked at these signs is we have a lot of condominium signs that are actually in the right-of-way. And is that something we want to grandfather in, or is that something we want, just kinda?
If it ain't broke, why fix it? Is it creating a problem?
I wouldn't say so. But if somebody goes to erect another sign, and it's not on their actual property, then we'll prohibit it.
Why, why couldn't they put it on the right-of-way? I mean, if the right-of-way is there for the access of utilities, correct?
Yes, it's there for every manner of local regulatory use. I mean, it's, it's our, it's our property functionally to.
And so that means?
Ordinarily, you prohibit people from putting stuff in your right-of-way.
But if they do, then they're responsible for moving it, or not responsible for moving it. They're, they've gotta figure out, what do I do if it's in the way? You know, if it's in the way in utilities, or city, or whoever comes along and removes it, they've got no complaint.
Not necessarily. If you're permitting it, and you're saying, if, if, if you've, and I say permit, like permitted it to be.
Unless you grandfathered it, until it has to be moved. No?
No, I'm saying like, yeah, that's one, that's certainly one way of coming at it.
Well, instead of going out and telling everybody right now, you gotta move it.
That's in the ordinance. You can't have it on a right-of-way.
If it's in the ordinance already, then.
Yeah, it was in the previous ordinance too, it's just.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're in derogation of your code.
That's not being changed.
They're there in derogation of your code presently.
Okay, well then, if they're a violation, they're a violation.
That's right. I always say it's been, I read that. I read a lot of political things, that's where it went, and that's where it stayed.
So those are essentially need to be moved, is what you're saying?
Hold on a second.
Sorry.
It's a matter of discussion. I know this is, legalese is not easy for a person that's not trained in legalese, to understand all a situation. But I noted a lot of the quotes from this document came straight out of the Supreme Court. And to make that simplified, I don't know if legally we're allowed to do that. These are just observations. Can we change the verbiage that's handed down to us for it to transmit? These are just my observations.
I can, I can say that my comments do not relate to the wherases, because they're not gonna become part of the published ordinance. And they do not relate to provisions like the one we looked at, which is really incorporating language.
Can you be specific and feed that back to the city manager and to Randy as to what you objected? I mean, it's always saying, okay, it's not able to be read. I think any individual that's objecting to something should supply Randy and the city manager with what verbiage you don't, that you want streamlined.
I guess to adequately do that, I would need to study it more. But I can say that my goal would be that the ordinance be more readable, less.
Well then, I think it's be who's, each member who objects to supply to Randy and the city manager what they object to and would like streamlined, not just say streamline the whole thing, or make it more readable. If there's specifics, let them know what the specifics are, so they're not in a dark. So right now, we're in an impasse, where the majority of the board does not wanna accept what was presented today. Are there any other general business to?
Before we move on.
Pursue. That's why I'm opening it up.
No, I appreciate it. As a matter of procedure, there is a motion on the floor that has been seconded and not resolved or withdrawn.
It died.
Well, there was no vote called for on, on the motion.
Well, I'll vote, I'll call for a vote right now on the motion.
It was your motion, yeah, it was the.
It was my question, I remember. What is the wording of the, of the motion, is what I was waiting for.
Which we went through. The, the, I understand the mission, I believe, is to try to just simplify the way that this reads. I am not an attorney, I think you are. You're an attorney.
I'm not.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm just a.
So.
Certified counsel.
I think you made a good point in that people who are not attorneys generally do not read this as well as someone who is an attorney. You probably read it and got everything out of it to understand it. You probably didn't, I think you didn't. Okay, if you didn't, I think what we have to do is be cognizant of that, because we don't wanna have to force people to go to an attorney to say, how do I put up a sign? But the flip side of that is, we don't want it so simple that we open ourselves up to all sorts of issues and interpretations.
Can I make a recommendation at the risk of interrupting you, Mr. Member Hart? Because, as I mentioned on the city attorney in Indian Rocks Beach, they just went through a six and seven month saga of a very complex ordinance adoption. This is itself a complex ordinance adoption, ordinance adoption by a different flavor. Perhaps my, my recommendation, based on what your discussion is, and ultimately is your decision, is that we bring this back for a second hearing, and in the interim, give them. And in the interim, give the members, now that we've had, you came to this table somewhat, let's say, uninformed, not by your own fault, but you were given, as you said, sort of this daunting document and said, hey, what do you think? And we've had a preliminary discussion. I think just like with the complaint, when you were handed this complex document and said, hey, what do you think? Maybe there's value in taking this conversation, marinating or reflecting on it, if you will, and having this brought back as another measure at your next meeting, whether that be July or August, subject to people's travel schedules and the like. And in the interim, I'm happy to meet with, meet and talk with any of you who wish to discuss this with me, ask questions, and I can say, hey, I've met with you each individually. I'm not pulling you for this is the product. I'm saying, what is your input? I take whatever input is well taken and either present you a new product or say, here's why I couldn't present you a new product. Now, what do you want to do with it? And that gives you all more time to either reflect on it, tear it up, look at it and say, you know what? I think it would be made easier this way now that I have a Saturday sitting by the pool to just kind of look at this thing. And that way, we're not losing a lot of time trying to accomplish what we're not, what it seems we're not prepared to accomplish yet. So perhaps it's just a move to table a recommendation to your next meeting so that, and understanding that staff is comfortable with the product we put before you and we stand behind it, or at least I do because it's my product, I'm a little bit critical. I know the class is prepared to administer it in its current form. But with that in mind, that would be my recommendation to you based on your discussion and the pivoting motions. It just seems we're not all at a place of comfort where the majority as well can be ascertained.
Okay.
Based on that, I withdraw my motion.
And I, I'll withdraw the second.
No, you can't withdraw the motion. You'd have to have a vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Have a vote.
All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Signify by saying aye. You made the motion. And she?
But after discussion, I'm not going to vote for it.
Oh. Well, that's
So I want to withdraw.
Yeah, so the motion, the motion.
Yes. And then?
Then, that's a second withdrawal?
Yes.
Motion dies. I'll entertain another motion.
A motion, we tabled the decision to forward this until we have more time to study it and look at alternative presentation.
Second?
And discuss with city attorneys.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that would be, you know, whatever.
Do I hear a second?
That would be a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything other to become the for this board?
Yes. So as Randy previously mentioned, we have another ordinance that I'd like to consider recommending a change. We've had, as of this year, four variance hearings come up based on one section of code. And the section of code has to deal with the height of a swimming pool can be built at in the, on the property of a residential low, single-family home property. And what it currently states, let's see if I can pull this up, is that the height of the swimming pool shall be no higher than 18 inches above the crown of the road. And then, that's really
Crown of the road?
The crown of the road. So the elevation. And then it goes on to say, any structure part of any permanently installed in-ground swimming pool or spa shall not be built 24 inches above the pool deck, including raised spas, raised pool beams, upper-level decks, and raised waterfalls. Auxiliary deck, mounted equipment such as handrails, ladders, grab rails, diving boards, and slides should not be subject to the height limitations set forth in this section. So that's the whole thing. But it's really where the problem lies, and we've had hearings about, is people installing new pools where they've never had a pool on their property. And they're finding that if they can only go a maximum of 18 inches above the elevation of the crown of the road, the pool is very low compared to the rest of the grade of the property and their living level floor. So they're not only having to build multiple steps to get to that elevation if the pool deck was at that height, but on some properties, we've seen where all the grade is higher than that height, it causes almost a bowl effect if where all the water will drain into that.
The crown, the wrong reference?
So if I look back at the hearings we've had, and I pulled up the old, the ordinance and the minutes surrounding the ordinance and the discussion, which, I'm not trying to have you guys make a recommendation today, but I want the next meeting to have it on the agenda and find out on what information you want me to provide for you to make this recommendation. I've already pulled the ordinance, which was a 2014 ordinance, the minutes surrounding, but I also can provide the audio of that meeting, specifically the discussion of that ordinance. I think it gives the best background of what was being considered at the time. Quickly, I gather, the main complaint was that, and there was a property on Harrison Avenue that built a pool and it was elevated significantly above the crown of the road. And it caused, like, you know, a deck where the neighbor was looking down into the neighboring yards. That was the example given in the audio for that meeting. They originally were talking about the elevation of the pool being relative to whatever the base floor of the house was, but then it eventually turned into, well, we should base it off the crown of the road. Again, I'll provide you with that audio so you can listen to the reasoning behind it. But through all these variance hearings, the Board of Adjustment has kind of said, hey, you know, we keep getting these one after another, month after month. We should probably, because they keep granting them, we should probably adjust the code so that we don't have these hearings to be
Somebody's built a new home, don't they have to raise their lot anyway?
Required, yeah, that's where, I think that's where they got the 18 inches from. Originally, when you go to the grading section of the code, it's required to at least be 18 inches above the
And that's going to be affected as the government continues to change flood levels.
Sure.
And so not only are people going to be raising their, their properties, they're going to be raising their seawalls. And homes that were built before all that are very, mine's a perfect example. I could be sitting here with a seawall like this and my floor level's still going to be sitting down here by the time I'm meeting all the new codes. How do you, how do you hold somebody that's got a new lot or new pool to a code that doesn't meet floodplain requirements?
And that's where we're running into issues. I can tell you right now from the variance hearings, though, the first one was a request, and this is the greatest one to date, 14 inches above the maximum. So that would be a total of 32 inches above the crown of the road. But then the other ones we've had, one was four inches. So they're looking at 22 inches above the crown of the road, and the other one was five inches. So it's not extremely high over what the maximum is. But we do have one that's going to be heard in July. And this is a different issue because when they passed this original, or when they passed this ordinance, there were multiple properties, they said a lot of properties in the city are going to have a problem because they're not conforming, because their pool decks were significantly higher than the crown of the road.
Unless we're going to raise our road levels, eventually every house that gets knocked down and then put on is not going to meet this. Because their grade is going to be already above that.
We're all new.
They're going to run into issues. And then, like I said, we're starting to get those pools that were, that were within the code when they were built. But now, after they're starting to get redone, and now we're running into, what do we do? Because you got houses, like, the one coming in, I think, is four, about four feet above that height of the road. And it's existed before this ordinance.
What does the Board of Adjustment say?
That one's going to be interested. I haven't, they haven't heard it yet. But I'm curious of what they're going to say about the
I don't think we can approve anything that's in their purview. That's their purview, then, Ralmer's.
No. Correct, he's not asking for your opinion on that case.
On that case. I'm asking for you guys to look at this ordinance and we'll present it in a future meeting. But I can gather whatever information you think is pertinent to
Well, you can present it on the agenda. You can add it to the agenda the next meeting.
I'd be interested in knowing what the requirements are for building your lot up. You know, what are the current codes requiring? If a house is raised, what are the current codes requiring in terms of elevation and grade?
And I'd like to understand, what is the purpose? Is it, is it so that, does it look like an above-ground pool? Is that the goal here? It just seems like keeping pool water above draining into something else is probably a good thing. So it has to be elevated somehow, but, but I don't know
Well, all properties are, they're all required to retain the water either on their property or drain it to the road or the seawall, and it can't go on the neighboring property. So that doesn't change anything. Again, I'm going to provide the audio because, like I said, it seemed like the reason for them trying to establish that the height of the pool that can be was because people were getting them very high. Because I think at one time, a lot of houses were being built on, a lot of buildings being brought in. And so that was raising up everything. So we have some examples throughout where you have one house that's just, the grade of the property is three to four feet higher than the neighboring property. We don't allow that anymore, but it was happening.
That kind of grade?
It was happening. But those properties do exist with pools that are, that are at those elevations.
You know, it's interesting, I talked to you about this. We moved in from Fort Lauderdale about three years ago. They're going through exactly all of this. And in order to meet new code, the home next door to you, if it gets raised, they're having to build retaining walls. And their property is ending up three or four feet, just the grade is three or four feet higher than the house next to it. And then you put a deck on there, and you're already, you got people looking over the fence. Nothing you can do about it.
Well, the question is, can you present it to the board? Yes. Is there any objections to that for the next meeting?
No. So I'll gather the information and the rest of the code surrounding.
Just get it to us early. Thank you. Any other thing to come? Any other thing?
I did bring it up, but I don't know if it needs to go on a different agenda. I don't even know if it comes to the planning and zoning, but it's this issue of amenity rentals and control on that. Because there are communities now that people are renting their pools out, and all of a sudden, parties show up on the street, and there's nothing the cities can do about it. And you said you may be familiar with some of that.
I am acutely familiar with it. One of the platforms is called Swimply. While it's called Swimply and it is for renting your pool for, hey, you're going to be out of town, why don't you let somebody have a private pool party? Because you have a great beachside deck. You can also, it's, the platform has expanded so that you can rent your kitchen, your sound recording studio, your tennis court, insert element of your property here. I'd have to look at, I haven't looked at it specific to your regulations because some codes didn't necessarily anticipate that, but said, like, if you're going to rent, you rent the whole property. And so I can look to that code. I have provided Kyle, I believe, some information on that in the past. And I can revisit that, that language was incorporated into an ordinance. I did in another community recently. So I can talk with staff and at least present you what the landscape on that looks like, if that's a desire of the board.
Is it a planning and zoning?
All you got to look at is Indian Rocks.
Yes, it is, because it would be a land development regulation that would come before you and ultimately go to the commission.
I think a lot of people just aren't aware that that's starting to begin on
I wasn't.
Taking a look at Indian Rocks and what's coming his way is whatever else.
And we've got this strong position on our Airbnb's, so we ought to be doing everything we can to
I think the feedback is well taken, and I'm prepared to get that to staff. And it sounds like I'm looking at the nodding heads that if we, if it's not already regulated that you'd like to see some kind of at least presentation, if not ordinance, for your, to kick around and develop.
Yeah, the other thing is people renting their boats out. You know, they're bypassing Airbnb, but they're renting their boat out for an overnight stay. Now, I think we have ordinance against liveaboard here, don't we?
I believe you do.
So that would preclude anybody from, technically, from renting their boat out?
I think the use of the word technically there is well placed. The challenge becomes with any kind of thing like this is proof and evidence that they were, I was just, I was looking at the stars at night. You know, and absolutely you do, and I'm not suggesting you shouldn't regulate. I just, as we start getting closer, excuse me, to transient temporary uses, there's a few things in Florida that complicate that. And I want to say that upfront before we get into the chapter and verse of it all. But home-based business rules are one of them. The Florida legislature, two sessions ago, preempted your ability to regulate a home-based business. So if you, from your home here in Bel Air Beach, wish to operate a business, and I'm not just talking about an accounting firm, if you wish to operate, I've seen it in another community, somebody made their home a temporary UPS depot during the holidays. And there was no added traffic because it's just the one truck coming and loading, and they load in their driveway, and anybody can fit in the driveway. So there's, and there's restrictions around that, but it complicates your ability if it's just like, hey, somebody's doing something commercial, provided certain boxes are checked, they can do that. So it makes it a little more difficult. The liveaboard thing is different. But I want to make sure you know, and there's provisions in your code on that. But we, I can look at this landscape and brief the manager and come to you with a discussion of where you are and where you may need to go.
Yeah, I think you were running the same problem with, look, how we got all these boats out here. It's like, all they have to do is drop anchor.
Yeah, but we don't own that land out there. We don't, we don't, we don't
We only submerge land, but we can't regulate the water that's floating on top of it.
Anything else that really comes before this board? I'll call for an adjournment.
Vote.
All those in favor? Adjourn.